Going to get the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five commissioners meeting started. First up, we've got Paul Hyatt from the Abundant Life of Church here in Washington to have her prayer. Thank you.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with gratitude for the opportunity to serve our community. Thank you for the freedom we have to gather, to plan and to work together for the good, good of all. We ask for your wisdom and guidance for each commissioner and leader present. Help them to make decisions that are fair, just and beneficial to those they represent. Give them clarity of thought, unity of purpose and courage to do what's right. Lord, we pray for a community for peace and for safety, prosperity for every household. May your hand and a blessing be upon those who serve, those who protect and those in need. Let everything done here today be accomplished with integrity, compassion and respect for one another. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Next up, we've got the meeting minutes from nine twenty-three of twenty twenty-five. Any corrections or anything on them?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Cook. I will second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero. Next up, we've got Highway with Chris. Morning, Chris.
Morning. I guess the first thing on there is the annual highway notice of receiving bids, which we've already advertised that in the paper. It's a notice hereby given to the Board of Davis, by the Board of Davis County Commissioners. We will receive sealed bids for paving various county roads and supplying asphalt, asphalt emulsions, rejuvenating preservative seal emulsions for the year twenty twenty-six. And a notice is given by the Board of Davis County Commissioners. We'll receive sealed bids for the Davis County Highway Department for the following supplies, materials and work to be for the maintenance of equipment, roads and bridges for the year twenty twenty-six, which is lubricating oil, culverts, concrete, flowable fill, sand, crest stone, precast bridge and engineering packages, tiny virus roads, calcium chlorides. And these bids are to be submitted to the Davis County Auditor's Office. And the bids will be opened at nine AM Eastern on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five during the commissioners meeting at the Government Center, three hundred East Teflon Street. So that's the advertisement.
I'll look for motion to accept bids for the supplies for the Highway Department.
Yeah, I think, did we already do that?
Yeah, well, we'll accept the actual bids. We'll open them next, on the twenty-eighth, we'll open the bids. And then two weeks after, we'll, we'll accept them. So I guess you can accept the advertisement of the bids.
The advertisement, yes, that's correct. And I, did that need to have a motion?
No.
Yes.
Grant, real quick on that. Is there a way that we can do these reading of the bids differently? Kind of what I'm, what I'm thinking, and you tell me, is maybe a special meeting, something like that, to where not everybody has to, has to necessarily be here. Who has to be here?
We certainly can do a special meeting. I think we've done it at some point in the past. It obviously has to be a public meeting.
Sure.
But we don't have to do it exactly the same as we've all, as we've always done it. I know it takes some time. What's it take, maybe ten, fifteen minutes to go through it?
Maybe thirty at the most, you know, it's.
Sometimes it's, it depends on what it is.
Yeah.
But the, kind of the key is that the people that come, they want to hear what their prices are. Sometimes it allows them to then, because they're going to a variety of locations.
It typically is the people who have put in bids or looking to put in bids in the future that want to hear that, right?
They really do want to hear it. And I know it's boring for.
That's why I'm wondering if everybody else, you know, has to be.
I just don't know if it would be more or less efficient to have a special meeting just for that. You know what I mean? When it's only, I mean, he's right, it's probably less than thirty minutes. Granted, we don't have to do it exactly the same as we, as we've always done it, but.
Well, just before I approve the, the posting, that's what I wanted to make sure in case you wanted to make any changes.
This is the twenty-eighth, it's a, it is at least a ten day notice on the receipt of bids.
So good on that.
I mean, we should have time. I was, do we always do it in October? Do you recall?
Yeah.
I'm open to your all's thoughts on it. Times if ain't broke, don't, don't break it, but I do recognize that it's boring.
Seems broke.
Does it?
Yeah, not, not the, we have to do the process. You have to do it. It just, it, when that, when there's other things on the agenda, there's other people that have to get to their stuff. And they have to sit through thirty, forty-five minutes, depending on what it's for, right? It just seems like a, a waste for them. They don't, they don't really care, but we still have to have it public.
And it's kind of, you know, it's not necessarily important to the most people out there, but the guys that are putting the bids, it is, it is very important.
So we still gotta have it. So I don't know if we do it during the highway meeting. If we, you know, same day, just during the highway meeting. Chris, I don't know if you have any other opinion on that or options on that to make it, make it better.
Oh, we've talked about it before in the past, because sometimes you, depends how many bids you get going through them. It's, it's kind of not real efficient. I think me and Grant do, we've gotten really good at doing it.
Right.
But it'd be nice to be able to kind of open everything, because we're not accepting the bids, and then do some tallying of the different bids. And then be able to come to this meeting and read out the different.
The tallies, yeah.
Yeah, because when I'm doing it on the fly, I mean, I'm reading stuff that there might be five guys here that put in bids, and I'm reading stuff from each company, three or four line items. But it may not be the line items that they even want to hear. I'm just randomly picking them out and reading them. So it'd be nice if we can maybe.
Also, you ask, you ask the guys in the audience, is there, is there something that works? Because that's, that's the key. They, they want to hear it, and there's maybe five-ish people that come and want to listen.
Do the girls have to be there too, right?
Um.
Because that's the other thing.
The auditor is supposed to be at a, the auditor is supposed to be at a public meeting.
Right. Okay.
I mean, if there are better ways to do it, I'm, I'm definitely open to that. We've, we've tried to make it as transparent, but also as, as efficient as possible.
Let's, let's keep it this way for this one. And let's start milling around some ideas, because if the auditor has to be there, I don't want it to be at seven fifteen for her, right? We all have to be there, so let's just keep it this way. So I'll make a motion to keep it as is and, and for the publication as is.
If October twenty-eighth at nine AM is when those have to be back, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Cook to keep the opening of bids the same on the twenty-eighth.
Send that out for publication.
Yeah, now for publication.
Yep.
Alright, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
Then on the project updates, I've got another meeting here at ten, and I'll, I'll be able to give a schedule. But the CCMG grant that we got, I might have said this last time, but the twenty twenty-four dash two that we got for paving various county roads, which included old Highway fifty from Washington's West Corporate Line to County Road three hundred, three hundred west, that is completed. Edwardsport from the Sports Complex to six hundred north is completed. Five hundred north from Edwardsport Road to the, the two, or, yeah, to two, or fifty-seven is completed. And then now they're going to start doing twenty twenty-five dash one CCMG grant that we received. And we're actually going to start milling on Wednesday on County Road one hundred south and Eleventh Street, which is Bixler Road is what we call it sometimes. We're going to start milling there. Today, I'm going to go talk to them at ten o'clock. And we'll give a schedule for the other roads that they're going to do and the sequence that they're going to do. And we'll advertise that on our Facebook page. And we'll put it out on our email list server to everybody to know where the construction's going to be happening at. They'll, they'll have flaggers and they will let the people get through, but there will, of course, in any construction, be some delays. So them roads, the roads will be starting Wednesday, one hundred south and, and Eleventh Street. So we'll, we'll go over that today, and I'll put that out where we're going to be. What else did I have? Oh, I had another thing that we're, we're going to be working on. I got a paper here, some email transcripts. I'll, I'll give the commissioners here. But the Highway fifty and two fifty-seven intersection that we've, it's, it has nothing to do with the county. We're not involved in it, but it does involve our county and our residents and our motor in public. We always hear a lot of voices of concern about that over the years. And I mean, we're talking about twenty years. And the state has done things to improve that intersection. The rumble strips, stoplight was a big thing that they implemented. And it's, it's been a process to get all these steps done. And another problem we have with it is the turning lanes. So the north and south traffic are going north and south and want to turn east and west. There's no turning lane, there's no turning light at that intersection, and, and it becomes an issue. The data, as far as in wrecks, doesn't necessarily support putting turning lanes there. The traffic count doesn't necessarily support putting turning lanes there. But when you're in the community and you see all the near misses and the skid marks and, and the complaints and everything, all the, the experiences that people had with their, you know, all that stuff does support doing something more to that intersection to help lessen the burden, whether it's material or physical to people in our community or surrounding communities. So I think with the commissioner's support, we're going to try to, I won't say petition in a bad sense, but petition NDOT to see if there is something more we could do at that, that intersection.
And I'll speak a little bit to my own experience there. Just the other day, so it seems like there's quite a bit of traffic from seven fifteen, seven thirty-ish to eight, people coming in and people leaving, and then also around five, five thirty-ish. And so I was there around five thirty, and, and two people were in the median turning, one going westbound, one going eastbound, right? And I'm behind it, not in the median, and, or not in the middle, I'm, I'm back. And a guy came behind me to go straight and flew past me and near missed the car turning. And so there's confusion when there's people trying to turn east or west there that don't have the on, the on-ramp turn lane or whatever. And that's where we do get crashes. And I would say, you guys can speak to this in that corner over there. This year, we might have had four, five, and, and if you correct me if I'm, and if you correct me if I'm wrong there. But the near misses are what, don't, you, you can't, you can't tally, right?
They don't have a tally for them.
And so it, it's just been, the stoplights have helped, but the no-turn lane is, is really, really causing a, a problem.
I think we've all had that close misses there, you know? You get people turning and you slide it behind somebody, oh, he's turning, so you're going around him, and it's just.
Yeah. Especially people don't turn in the turn signal until they get right in the middle. And then you're, you're thinking they're going straight, so you go with them, and, and then you're stuck, right? No man's land, and so, so just trying to figure that out. And again, isn't up to us, but it definitely affects our people, so.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt.
I'm sure you guys wouldn't mind it if there was something out there to help a little bit.
Been one vitality out there this year, motorcycle.
Gotcha. Right. Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt for us to advocate on behalf of our citizens and residents, but. Because we had start, Commissioner Gabhart had actually reached out about this.
Two thousand fourteen, or two thousand twenty-four, right?
Yeah, in December, and then I think after the accident, so that would have been in August, August second. I think I sent a email out, and it just never materialized. So I'll give you our email chain here. They're on outlets, so they're really hard to follow. And I got some LPA vouchers to, to read here. So the first two here are for another intersection that we've been working on. And the sheriff asked me today when the, when the roundabout is due to be built on Old Fifty, west of Washington and One Fifty. It's twenty twenty-nine, but we're already doing engineering on it for intersection improvement for the roundabout at Old US fifty and, and County Road One Fifty. So this LPA voucher here is for preliminary engineering. Both of them are preliminary engineering, claim eight and nine. It's six thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars thirty-eight cents, ninety percent reimbursable. So the reimbursable cost is six thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. The second one is the same thing, preliminary engineering. Claim nine is for a total of seven thousand two hundred seven dollars seventy-two cents, ninety cent, ninety percent reimbursable, six thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. So that is a ninety, a ten, so the state is paying ninety percent of that roundabout. And the local, the county is paying ten percent. So we pay it all, we get our invoice or reimbursable back. The next one is the bridge over Culvert Ditch on US Highway fifty, which is Bridge fourteen. Claim number five, the gross amount is thirty-one thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars and forty-six cents, eighty percent reimbursable, twenty-five thousand ninety-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. And that was for construction engineering. And both, all three of them were actually performed by Lock Miller Group for preliminary engineering, construction inspection. The, the bridge is completed. I don't have the total cost yet. And then something else I'll speak on is, I think on number four, you guys have a, what does it say?
Just an NDOT.
Yeah.
Dot report.
This India, this transportation report, recommendations for acceptance. So that's the completion of the bridge. But after some talks with NDOT, we're not going to accept the bridge until the spring of next year. There was some trouble with the concrete, that the, I guess it would be the supplier, not the contractor. So the contractor that built the bridge is paid. Everybody's paid. But if I accept the bridge, then I'm assuming complete responsibility for the bridge. And there are some issues with the concrete on when the, when the beams break and stuff like that, which is a test that is ran on the concrete. So we're going to let it settle, let the bridge set there for, till the spring next year and see how it performs. If I accept it, then I'm responsible for everything. If I don't accept it, then it'd be another issue which the vendor will have to help remedy, I guess, is what I'm saying. So, so I would say it's on there for you guys to accept as a, as a motion, to accept it. But my recommendation would be for you guys to not accept it at this time. And that recommendation is also in concurrence with what NDOT is directing me to do, because they were a partner in that bridge, paying eighty percent of it.
We need a. I make a motion on the LPA vouchers to accept the LPA vouchers as is.
Motion by Commissioner Cook to, to accept all three LPA vouchers. I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or just for clarity, you're taking Chris's recommendation relative to that.
And then that's the second one, yeah, the second one.
Did I say motion passes two zero, alright, on the vouchers? Alright, and then on the. Okay, the NDOT report, I'll entertain a motion to not accept this report and hold off till springtime, till Chris and NDOT inspect the bridge again in the spring.
Yes, we'll inspect it again, yes.
So I make a motion to not accept the bridge until, look at it in the spring.
Motion by Commissioner Cook. I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
That's all I've got.
That's it. Alright, thanks a lot.
Good work.
We're going to talk a little bit about two hundred north, if you got a.
By the coal mine.
Um, that's, that's on the agenda.
Yeah, the next one, number three.
So it looks like we've got agreement on all terms. Yesterday afternoon, the attorneys for REO sent over the revised draft. If you recall, last meeting or two meetings ago, you all voted unanimously on what you thought the terms should be. And they have accepted that. There may be some back and forth on language, but largely, they've, they've accepted our requests. And just to frame, frame that out, the two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional on that road bond, potential to move three fifty north, that bond over. And obviously, the, the existing bond, which all told puts us, I forget the amount. It's like three hundred and seventy thousand approximately.
Just under four hundred.
Yeah. They also agreed to pay up to a specific amount of our attorney's fees. I know that was important to Commissioner Gabhart. And then they have said the workaround road, at least in the draft, would be completed by the end of this year.
And that, that road is, I, I didn't get to drive it with REO. The time we were going to drive it, it rained and it was muddy. The, the road, the workaround road is in, it's just not gravelled, so, I mean.
I'd like to maybe specify for them, if we can, what that, the way it has to be. Just so it's like, well, we, we put in this dirt path.
Yeah, they're, they're planning on gravel in it. That's their plans, but I think they were, they kind of got it, we call it just muddied in. They got the road muddied in, and they were planning on leaving it like that until the commissioners and REO worked out this agreement before they went any further, because obviously they're going to put rock on that, and it's going to be eventually covered up and buried.
Do they have a timeframe when they're supposed to have rock on it by the end of the year? Well, that's when they're supposed to have the temporary road done, correct?
I guess when, yeah, yeah, I guess the temporary road technically would be whatever the disagreement was.
Are we asking for too much to have that gravelled by the end of the year?
No.
No, it has to be passable. It has to be up to our, whatever, whatever we go back, I, at a minimum, I want to clarify that, say this is how it needs to be by December thirty-one.
You and Chris, you and Chris can work on that, right?
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, just say.
I'll entertain a motion by the end of the year that the temporary road is rocked and passable. Yeah, I think up to highway department standards.
Yeah, so and typically, we do highway department standards on there.
Yeah.
There, we've got a, a formula of how much rock, how thick it has to be, what size of rock it needs to be in there, and what it needs to be topped with.
I'll entertain a motion to the temporary road by the end of the year be rocked, passable to Davis County Highway Department standards, inspected by Chris. Maybe all three of us commissioners can all take a, take a look at it, make sure it's what we want.
So moved.
Seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
And they had brought the, their forty thousand dollar check in, I believe it was last Wednesday.
For this month?
Yeah, for.
October.
Yeah, they're, I think they're a month. So that would be for September.
Okay.
So I've got it here. I think it states on the end.
That's three payments?
That's three payments.
Okay.
I think it states on there, they pay by the end of the month, but the way their accounting thing worked, it's always the first week of the next month. So I'll take it up to the auditor's office.
Okay, thanks a lot, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Next up, we've got the twenty twenty-six not-for-profit charity donations.
At this point, I'll just, I'll make a recommendation just to keep the same as last year.
Yeah, if, if you would put in the, the requested amounts and then whatever y'all want to do with it.
First one is Davis County Four H. They requested fifteen thousand, and we are giving them fifteen thousand. Four Rivers Red Door requested fifty thousand. We approved nineteen thousand. Davis County Historical Society, they requested forty. We are giving them forty. Davis County Fair requested twenty. They are receiving six. Senior Family Services requested twelve. They are receiving twelve. RSVP asked for eighty-three hundred. We are giving them seventy-nine hundred. Connections asked for twenty-five hundred. They are receiving twenty-five hundred dollars. Ride Solutions asked for ten thousand dollars, and we, they are receiving seventy-five hundred.
I think, I know at one point Nathan was trying to whittle that down to zero.
Yeah.
Obviously, we're not there, but at, at some point, we've got to look at. Nonprofits are very vital for communities, but we also have to look at, are they actually saving taxpayer dollars by providing some type of service, right? So like Ride Solutions, for instance, could say they are, because they're providing rides and we don't have to have county transportation through them, right? Something like that. I think that would be a, a good metric to, to start to look at in the future. To say, hey, what, there's a lot of nonprofits, a lot of people doing a lot of good work, but is it taxpayer dollars work? Does that make sense?
No, I, I agree with that. I know the last couple of years, they, they've, they've talked about this, you know? Each year, it is kind of a topic, topic on who should get what, how much, or if any at all. So, you know, it's something we can look into and, and talk about.
It's never easy to say no. It never is, but it's also easy to spend other people's money.
I agree.
So.
You'll have a motion, maybe a, a motion and.
Yeah.
To formalize it.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to approve the same amounts as last year as this year to the non-for-profits. And also to look into seeing how we can clean it up a little bit more.
Yeah, that's, that's a good, I'll, I'll second that motion or, or make it, whichever one I need to do.
Seconded by Commissioner Cook. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero. Next up, we've got some grant requests from Scott Myers. Morning, Scott.
We'll start with the first one. The first one is the Emergency Management Performance Grant Salary Reimbursement. FEMA has grants that the State of Indiana applies for on behalf of the counties of the State of Indiana. And they, in turn, up to fifty percent of salaries are reimbursed back to the counties the following year from previous year's salary. So this is that agreement that we do annually, and they pay, right now, they're paying thirty thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars, I think, in reimbursement back.
Looks like it, it looks like it's like a non, non-county match.
Yes. Yeah, it's just.
See any problem with it? See anything?
No.
I'll look for motion to pass a grant on the salaries.
I make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Cook. I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
Thank you. The second one is State Homeland Security Grant. It is also, State of Indiana Homeland Security applies to FEMA for grant money under this grant program. This grant program is set by FEMA as priorities of what the money can be spent on. And typically, what has been in the last few years is terrorism, because it's been the, the high point of trying to resolve the soft points in that. So this grant is applied for, through that process. And we're applying for equipment to help our emergency response teams for our law enforcement, the City of Washington and Davis County Sheriff's Office, in order for them to have equipment that they can better use to fight that crime. And terrorism can be simple as foreign, domestic, it can be a, a next-door neighbor. I mean, it, what terrorism is nowadays is so broad-stroked that it, it can be, it doesn't have to be somebody blowing up buildings or anything like that. It's, it'd be pretty simple.
This is the reimbursement, or is this the?
Yes, it's paid for first by the county and then full, hundred percent reimbursement.
I'll make a motion to move forward with that grant.
I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
Scott, do you know anything, did we get that inter-local agreement with the coroner? Do you know anything about that? Sorry to spring that on you.
On the coroner?
Yeah, there was supposed to be a inter-local agreement, Martin County, Grant, have you seen that?
I have not seen anything.
Okay.
We've.
Sorry, I didn't mean to spring that on you, but.
We've talked about that, coroner Tyler.
Yeah, yeah.
Not sure where it's at in pro, process, but I believe it's done.
Okay.
I think he was going to send it over to Martin County for them to look at.
Sure.
And then get their feedback, if any, and I don't think I've heard anything.
Perfect, just wondering where we're at. Thanks, y'all. Thank you.
I believe that's about it. Anybody from the audience got anything?
Dale, are you, you're comfortable with that one policy? Okay, maybe we'll include that on the next agenda.
And I just got one thing. Um, I know the council uh, just passed a uh. A point one percent tax for EMS. Um, I wasn't aware that was happening that quick. Um, we had an information meeting on Tuesday, Wednesday that passed. Uh, to my knowledge, I think at least the majority of us commissioners were unaware that was going to be brought on Wednesday. Um, we are looking at, and some of you guys might not know, we are looking at GPC TIF. Um, we have a TIF district that is expiring, if you will, and there's money in that. And according to my quick bar eve math, if you will, and uh, so um, it looks like we'd have between four and five years. Of money in that TIF that could go towards EMS to help, because right now what they're looking at with the new CEO is, is. Hey, there's some billing issues, there's some things that we can cut back on. And that would delay a tax, maybe even get rid of it if we can figure out what's going on um, with that. And I just, being, being new, this is tenth, tenth month. What I've, what I've learned is, is there's a lot of stuff that comes at you really quick and you got to learn and you got to catch on. If you don't have principles set, you can get swayed either way. And I said it earlier, it's really easy to spend other people's money. Really easy. And I'm just not for that, nor am I for taxing people if we don't have to in the moment. We don't know really what SB one's really going to look like. Um, that's the state property tax, how that really is going to feel, we have projections. How that really is going to affect us. And uh, so to the, turn around and make a, and they, they've worked on it, they, they're not doing something irrational. But to make that, when we have money setting there that actually legally could be used for EMS, right? And to help, because it helps the whole county. And then it doesn't tax anybody, that makes a lot more sense to me. So I just wanted to bring that up and to talk about it a little bit. We don't have to talk about it here, we can, but to bring it up at least to the public. That that's what's happening and um, and I am dead set against it at this moment. Um, but it is a council decision. And then RDC uh, redevelopment um, has a decision on the TIF. But it just kind of makes sense to me to really look into that, to kind of offset those costs instead of taxing our people more and more and more. And is it a lot? No, but it is to a lot of people. So I wanted to kind of speak to that real quick before we ended.
I think they went, they kind of went through it, I think, don't totally quote me, but I think if it was a household of maybe making around sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. It was roughly fifty-eight dollars a household or something like that is what, what that point one percent roughly, roughly is.
Sure.
I know they kind of thought of it, you know, just to take care of our ambulance contract is kind of the reason what they were discussing.
And I don't, I don't fault the reasoning, other than if we do have money there, why are we not using that for that?
Understand.
Because I know there's other stuff being, being pitched around and thrown around to use it for, that might not be really able to use it for. But there's, there's things being tossed around and uh, and if we can delay tax or not tax, that would be my, my go-to. Right? And again, it's just a, a, you got to have principles set and uh, taxation is not wrong, but overtaxation is. And uh, and what we tend to do is, is we say, well, I'm not taxing that much here, but then there's ten taxes, right? That are different, which when you add up to me is overtaxation. And overtaxation's theft, uh, let's just call it what it is. And uh, so the more money we can put back in our people's pocket, the better. Um, I know there's all kinds of variables, we got to, we got to have an ambulance that we do. Well, there's money there that can delay that. And at least let us get a handle on what SB one really is going to look like, in my, in my uh, personal opinion.
And then a lot of that stuff's all going to change in twenty twenty-eight anyway.
That's when it fully goes in, yeah, yeah, a hundred percent into effect, so. And they're fighting it every year with different things um, at the, at the state house. And uh, so you never know what's going to come out of that. Um, so to, if we can delay it, that's, that's the best possible scenario in my opinion. And use the money we already have.
My, maybe my request would be related to that, is if you all have uh, opinions and thoughts, share those with council quickly. They need to complete it, complete the, complete the process by the end of this month. So essentially there's two weeks to talk about it, if there's going to be any changes.
Right.
Alright, good information.
That's all I, all I got.
That's it. Uh, I'll entertain a motion for pay, payrolls, claims and agenda.
So moved.
Motion by uh, Commissioner Cook, actually it's from me, anyway. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, everybody.